Welcome to our workstation. This is a March 4th, 2025. We have an agenda here that has been revised. The only thing on this agenda tonight is the harbor user fee.
We can start now?
Yeah, we're starting. I have a job. So, do you need your phone in this book? Okay, we got it for him.
But you took that form, yes.
So, Kim has prepared a revenue option for us to consider at a budgeting. And it's been discussed before, but we need to see his actual details and some information about other folks and what they've been doing. Kim, would you like to bring us up to date on the information that you've been able to acquire after this?
My stat report is pretty much the extent of what I have. I just essentially, I couldn't find, maybe in Seattle, but we don't really have big cruise journals. So, concept of passenger fee, marine fees, harbor user fee, charter head tax is not really an Oregon thing, it's more of an L square thing. And so, all I did was, because the council identified they were interested in this fee, is I just did the best I could to come together with information from various sources. And what you see is the result of the problem that we have in the city.
Okay, so we'll open up for council discussion.
Here, can we have Kim summarize her, also her report, please?
She just did.
It's up to us to have read the packet and to have detailed questions about it. Yes, Fran? Well, thank you for putting the information together that she has spoken. And this was, I think, the highest priority for our discussion when we had a list of potential revenue generating options. So, I'm glad we're moving forward on this. It seems to me that having some of the options laid out in terms of, you know, per passenger or an annual fee option is different for, you know, per passenger or that's like might be for us harder to audit, make sure we're getting paid, you know, what, how many passengers were taken, maybe harder for the operators to track. But then again, most everybody uses their credit card now, so if it could be a user fee just on basis. So, I think we'd have to hear from the charter operators, what would be the preference, assuming we go forward with this. And I would also really like the fact that it would be dedicated only to, because I think it would be much better supported, dedicated to harbor uses. And because we run an eighty-five thousand to million dollar deficit and have to keep on transferring money from our general fund to harbor. Harbor never pays for itself. So, I think this is a way for it to actually pay for what resources it's requiring of the city. So, I think this is reasonable in that we had a lot of language from other places about, you know, some of the legal language of the filing where they turn the means and other course of use of funds. So, if we go with the per head thing, that would be required. If it's a flat fee, that might be an easier lift and we probably get more reliable revenue.
Yes, Eva? I've done a bunch of research on this today, before we started talking about dollar amounts and all of that. The first thing I will say is that I understand that the city wants to generate more funding from the harbor, which I actually don't disagree with. This as presented creates a lot of legal problems. And to start, I will say that our line of the Constitution says of Oregon that there are no polar head taxes shown to let you collect in Oregon. And in looking at that, I actually looked at a recent legal decision in the city of Portland that implemented the arts tax. And they actually, the city of Portland, basically they instituted a thirty-five dollar head tax on everybody in Portland to fund the arts. They were subsequently sued. They didn't win, but the reason why they won was because those that had to pay the thirty-five dollar head tax, they fell into a certain tax bracket, like they had to make more than a thousand dollars a year, okay? That there is a way to circumvent the no head taxes are allowed in Oregon. The reason why Kim's not able to find any resources of charter fees in Oregon is because head taxes are outlawed. So, if we're going to call this a harbor user fee, then it needs to be a fee paid by all harbor users. And I actually looked up according to what Oregon has done. In response to that Portland arts tax is that a polar head tax requires a tax must be assessed per capita and must be a uniform fixed amount. If we do a uniform fixed amount on a specific group of people in this harbor, it creates a serious liability for the city. If we're going to do a, if we're going to call it a harbor user fee, okay, then that means every single person that uses the harbor needs to pay that fee. It cannot just be everybody on a charter boat or a guide boat. It would need to be something along the lines of everybody that launches off the boat, launch that is making money from that would need to pay that fee. Looking into that, it can't really be a fixed, I mean, it can be a fixed dollar amount by the city because the city says, hey, you know, this is our harbor, we're going to charge you two bucks a day to use it. Okay, or two bucks per person or whatever. I think that we need to start there before we start talking about details of trying to figure out how to implement this fee because as you said, portions of this are completely not practical. Boats themselves cannot collect fees when people get on board. There's actually in the current city depot bay harbor ordinance and charter, it prohibits people from conducting business on the dock or collecting money. So, how can we pass something that forces boats to collect money when someone gets on board? When the very city law itself says we can't do that. Other than the, and that's, and that's just kind of the very basis of it. But if you're, if we're going to call it a harbor user fee, then we're going to have to figure out a way to charge everybody that leaves this harbor or that enters this harbor. It can't be a head tax, it has to be a fee designated by the city. Which comes down to who's going to be standing at the boat launch dock counting heads? Who's going to be monitoring who's leaving the harbor and what's their purpose? Is this for anybody using the harbor, anybody that launches their kayak to go out? Are they paying this additional fee beyond boat launch fee? Is it somebody who's paying on a boat, is it a guide or a charter? Is it all, or is it boat or is it neither? But either way, there's going to have to be some sort of oversight and I don't know how the city can do that. I mean, people leave the harbor at all hours of the day. That being said, I mean, I'm not for additional city taxes, but if we want to implement a tax, I think we need to do it the correct and legal way so that the city is not liable to any problems. And for me, I feel like that was just a starting point to everything that was presented. And there is a lot of good information here, but again, talking to, because I know a lot of people in California, they have charter head taxes there, but the state allows head taxes. Oregon simply does not. So, however we frame this, it can't be this way. The other side of it is that these sample dollar amounts of two dollars, three dollars, things like that, this is information that I could not find, but there are certain percentages that cities are allowed to tax people on. If you're talking about a three dollar per person on a whale watching tour, well, I know that whale watching tours are thirty dollars a person. If it's three dollars, that's a ten percent tax. If you're talking about a two dollar charge on a fisherman, the most basic fishing trip is a hundred bucks. So, the percentage is completely skewed in that way to where I don't know that specific dollar amounts can be charged in this situation based on whatever rules are governing how much of a tax you could tax people. And again, I agree that, you know, it's good to get more money for the harbor. However, I'm conflicted on that because I don't have any working information on how much money is the harbor losing?
I just told you that's from these.
Eighty to a hundred thousand.
Eighty-five, that's from these.
And is that from financial statements or? Okay, so if that's the case, then we have a designated dollar amount and whatever dollar you're going to be charging people passing on to people that are using the harbor needs to kind of go and cycle that. I also think that based on, I mean, if you're talking, if this harbor sends out a hundred thousand people a year, then a dollar a person is more than sufficient. And I also think that instead of starting big, if you're going to start somewhere, you need to start small because it's going to take not only the charters and not just the charters, but the guides, the outfit, anybody that has a boat, anybody that's taking anybody out for any reason. It's going to take them a while to figure out how to implement this and collect this. And there's lots of accounting issues there, okay? But it's also going to take time for the city to figure out how to audit this. How are you, how are you guys going to monitor and enforce? How are we supposed, how are we supposed to do that? I mean, if we generate all this extra money, then we're, you know, that's great, but we also need to figure out what it's designated to be used for. And since we just got new docks, I am unclear, I mean, those docks, we shouldn't have, they should be maintenance free for at least five years. So, that extra a hundred thousand dollars, what, what are we buying? What are we spending on? Is it? It was not, in fact, it was printed out, maybe it's what I think, but in any case, I mean, I think these are all important questions to be asked, everyone, okay? So, if we can figure out where it's being spent on, I think we're going to get more support. But I also think that there needs to be some sort of way to call, we can't call it a head tax. Or if you're going to call it a harbor user, then it has to be harbor users, which is excellent, not just specific district companies. That being said, the other issue that I see with this is that I'm not sure if the city is aware, but there are four charter companies in depot bay, okay? There's Dockside, Tradewinds, Carries, Whale Research Excursions, and the West Hill. I do not know how three out of four of those country companies are structured, but I can tell you that Dockside charters is a booking agent. I believe Tradewinds the same way, but I won't speak for them. Dockside charters does not put a single person on the ocean every year. We are a booking agent, we don't book, we don't book, we can book anything. I can book walks on the beach in Lake City, I can book Airbnb's, I can book anything. We just happen to book boats that are fishing and whale watching in depot bay. But if I wanted to expand, I could start booking retreats in BC, okay? We don't take people out on boats. The boats themselves are their own charter companies that take people out. So, if you're going to tax a per person fee or any kind of fee on the charters, who are you taxing? Because if you're going to tax the boats, then the boats are going to have to completely restructure how they do business because boats don't take a dime. And the reason why the boats don't take a dime initially upfront is because there is a city harbor ordinance that says you cannot conduct business on docks. There's no money exchanged allowed. So, we can't ask the boats to take a dollar or two dollars or three percent or whatever, whatever money when people board their boats because there's no way to feasibly do that. It would literally go against current depot base and charter and ordinance.
But you collect there.
So, as a booking agent, they pay us a fee to book for them. We're kind of like Expedia or Airbnb, okay? So, you know, somebody that owns a house in Portland, they could say, hey, I want me to book my house in Portland, I'll pay twenty-five percent of the revenue and I give the rest, and the house gets the rest. So, since we're technically their running managers or their Expedia, how, how can, how can the booking agent, like, you're going to have to figure out, we're going to have to figure out a way to implement that to where, who, who are you taxing? Are you taxing a booking agent or are you taxing the boat? And if you're taxing the boat, how is that booking agent going to figure out how to get, you know, they have to collect that tax money from the customer because it would be passed along to the customer, right? And then they keep it and then it goes to the boat. And then the boat at quarterly or whatever you guys come up with is, would have to pay that to the city. And you're talking about multi-level steps of accounting that requires a lot of conversations with CPAs about how that works. Especially considering, yes, a lot of transactions are credit card now, but there is a percentage that aren't cash. A lot of bookings are online versus in-person on the phone. I don't know of an easy way to mitigate that. There are ways, Expedia obviously pays and deals with that when they're dealing with taxes and things like that. But it's a pretty big jump to ask a small business in a town with a population of eleven, four hundred people to ask them to spend that much extra money a year to figure out how to legally collect the tax and remit it to the city in this way, based on the way that these businesses are structured. All of the boats within depot bay are individually owned and operated. None are, I'm always, not in mine, are owned by Dockside charters. And as far as I know, most people are set up that way. That's why there are business licenses every year for each individual boat, not just one company. And so, there would be, there would have to be a lot of legal insulting on awarding this because I don't, I don't know who, who are you collecting the money from? And who's, who's in charge of doing that? That's, that's my starting point.
Well, thank you, Eva. And that's the purpose of work session, is to get this all information out. And I don't believe, Kim, did we have this passed through the attorney at all?
Just a rough initial draft.
Just a rough draft, okay.
And whether or not it's a charter head tax or a user fee, we can. That's what they call a head tax.
Absolutely, and that's why, that's why it's on the ordinance as a harbor user fee, but for context, it's been referred to as other terms. That was the only read, but all of the other places call it a marine passenger user fee or marine passenger fee, marine passenger fee, that sort of stuff. So, I think I put those in there too as options on other titles businesses have to use, so. So, I think that if this is something that they need to do.
And again, like I said, if you want to call it a harbor user fee, that has to apply to everybody that uses the harbor. And for what purpose, that needs to be defined too.
Or marine passenger fee or passenger fee, so.
So, anybody that launches a boat off the boat launch, whether you're doing it for a charter or for pleasure, if they're using the harbor, they have to pay the boat launch fee plus this proposed harbor use fee. And how the money, how the city goes about collecting that money, I have no idea, but.
I think we could just adjust the launch fee for individual boats to include that extra portion.
Then if you're doing it by per person, some of those carry ones, some of those carry six.
Can I ask a question, Kim? How close are you having the numbers for the budget for the harbor? The income proceeds expenses.
I just gave you guys all that to see.
Well, I sent it.
I sent it last night.
Oh, okay.
I thought everybody got printed a copy. Here, you can have mine.
Yeah, my version looked at all the numbers, it was just.
So, just for you guys, because she can have, have this on her feedback line? So, what I'm saying is the total expenditures, and this is the proposed budget? No, this is the actual. This is actuals. Okay, so the actuals were just under six hundred thousand. And it was required, required from TRT, it was eighty-five thousand. So, the budgeted amount for next year is eight nine eight seven eleven. So, we have to find eight hundred ninety-eight thousand seven hundred and eleven dollars to cover the expenses for the harbor. So, we are looking for creative income opportunities. If, and, and y'all realize that she owns a charter company, right?
And then there's a better hearing.
Yes, you already said it. I know, but for the record, I'm just, so.
And again, this is.
So, we're just looking for creative.
Wait, 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 you said the budget is eight, right?
Yeah, the budget.
Okay.
We haven't recorded.
And then you said we have to come up with eight hundred and ninety. But we already have.
We have to figure out where it's.
We have, we know where a lot of that income comes from. It comes from charter fees and from mortgage fees and from our docks and.
Trans or some T I T.
That's all of that. So, what's the difference between the eight ninety-five and the income?
Right.
Eighty-five.
Eighty-five thousand, so.
This year, but that, this is without, you know, grants and capital improvements and stuff and it goes up. This is just like one year, it's oftentimes more than that, like a hundred thousand.
Well, I understand, I understand that.
Yeah.
Here, may I?
Yes.
First of all, here, I want to, I would like to say, but I read this before. When I asked for the city manager to summarize it, I was thinking mainly about this audience out here and everybody collected.
It's a city workshop for the council.
I've often, through my experience, found that city managers elsewhere at every opportunity introduce something, say something about it. But I didn't want my opinion diminished in any way because you think I didn't read this material. I read it and I thought deeply about it and the minutes in here reflect that's what I think about it. Thank you, Eva, for saying that. I hope everybody understands that when you impose a tax on a business, then it is monumental because these businesses have a bookkeeper and that bookkeeper suddenly thrown into a huge new mode dealing with a, some kind of tax. And it's also, and I've heard the city manager say this, imposes a great deal of work on our staff. And this whole idea of going after taxes in depot bay really kind of escapes me anyway because one of the things about the harbor, and I understand the need to get the, the, the income for the harbor up. But one of the things I've asked with them the last year is what if we became on parity with the eight or nine other harbors in the state? In terms of our mortgage fees and our storage fees and everything else that is charged? So that we develop the income that we can. Now, naturally, I agree with you when, when, you know, not you, we take that back. The comment of Valerie's is right on. We have to be cautious of the advice we get from, for example, our harbor commission that's made out of harbor interest because the incentive, there are no incentives to raising your rates or anything else. And so, as a result, over a fifty-year period, we have this harbor where the rates are artificially depressed or not collected at all in a wide variety of things. And I think that's what, what has to be tackled here, is that we need to charge appropriately. And I asked this not long ago, Kim, I said, and I think you remember, what if we charge what everybody else charges? Would we be able to eradicate that debt? And it really wouldn't be unfair because then our operators are paying simply what everybody else is paying. Now, that question was never really answered. And so, before we go putting a head tax on, on anybody or taxing anybody for anything, I think we should look at that. Now, excuse, let me, if I can just finish here. One thing that concerns me is that we have not made a case for this wide raft of taxes here. I have heard our mayor say on at these two occasions, we are in solid financial shape. We are good, we are sixteen million dollars liquid. Why do we need taxes? That has never been explained to me. Why do we need to impose taxes on people? If we are solid financially and we are liquid to the sixteen million dollars figure?
Can you address that?
Pardon me?
Yeah, I guess that.
Oh, yeah, please.
Because we're using transit room taxes to fund our general fund and that is what's paying for our harbor. And those taxes are limited. And that's why we have a balance in our, you know, not only until now that they've been limited.
It's only been in the last, ever since Kim brought this up, that we even stirred or we weren't even concerned. But I hear what they're saying. But I would say this also, that we have to do with that money what we need to do. And we need to work with, there, there's already a push at the state legislature to, and Kim, is this correct? To make it so that we can use that tax money for other things than, you know, promotion or?
There is, but there's also a strong push, the, the opposite side that is just as loud and just as powerful as the city.
Well, then we need to be.
It's unlike, it, it might not pass.
We need to be affirmative in our defense of the way we spend our money because everything we do here is tourist-oriented. If you think about it, tourists can't get to the store if our roads are in disrepair. Tourists need to be protected by the county sheriff. Almost everything that we spend can be in defense of tourism and I don't know why we're not doing that. Every, every infrastructure item is in defense of tourism. Now, we can't, on the other hand, say, oh, we're going to make it hard for tourists here. And, you know, let me close with this, here. I did a charter once and I brought it out a couple of times, I'm not going to do it again tonight. But I said, this charter, if we did one hundred vacation rentals and those vacation rentals were sixty percent to seventy percent filled, that we would bring in one million dollars a year. This new development up here. The guy came in here, what, a couple of months ago and said he's got a hundred and how many, sixty? A hundred and sixty vacation rentals that he can build up there?
Yeah, it's pretty close.
About a hundred and sixty? So, that's a million six that we can get, you know? If we make it easy for this guy to do everything, put our efforts in, invite him to get this thing going and then do some of that promotion for our town to make this the destination center on the coast, that will flood our coffers with a million six. What we need to do is, and I think that would be ahead of a head tax or a food and beverage tax, which is just going to be a miserable thing for so many.
So, I think we should drop the taxes in total, is that your view?
I think we should get out of the tax business here and be an enterprise.
Okay, I totally agree. Thank you. But with your idea to do this, in the first place, you had Mr. Masella to explore them.
So, to explore these other taxes?
Yes.
I don't recall that, yeah. Thank you.
Well, as part of the financial advisory committee, there was a large discussion because I reviewed it about ways to increase revenue to the city and there was a whole list of things and many of these taxes are, were also discussed and proposed to the council.
I think it'd be great to see the minutes from that meeting.
Oh, you can go on the website, they're all over there. They're all over the website.
Well, I agree with you, Mayor. Thank you for letting me explain that. And thank you, Eva, for your contribution on this at least.
Yes, Eva?
Yeah, I just, I wanted to get back to the issue and I would agree. I think we need to get away from taxes on citizens and I get, I get what you're saying, that people should be charged the same amount as everybody else as far as we want to make our harbor similar to others. The only problem with that, and based on my time on the harbor commission ten years ago, and maybe things have changed, but our harbor is not like other harbors. We don't have boat washing facilities, we don't have showers, we don't have a lot of things that our harbor simply cannot have because we're small, or the world's smallest harbor. We can't have the facilities that Newport or Air Vauldi or any of these other places have. I know we just raised more agrees. You could, if you wanted to raise them a little bit more, I mean, anybody can raise anything. I think that finding other fees for things is going to be a lot easier than trying to. finding other fees for things is gonna be a lot easier than trying to go the tax route. And later on in the city council meeting, we're gonna talk about crab pot storage fees and the limitation of them. Personally, I think it would be a lot easier if the city went and worked with the harbor instead of trying to implement taxes on coffers. Because I think a great example would be these crab pot storage fees that are being implemented. Instead of rewriting the entire harbor ordinance, I think that the harbor could, I think the city would have been able to generate a lot more money from the harbor if they would have just said, hey, we're not gonna change anything. Your crab pots are stored in order of manner, but we're gonna charge it for them because we have redocks. I think that if someone had just gone to some of these mortgage holders and said, the harbor needs to make more money. Let's figure out ways to do that. We can start charging storage fees. We can start charging whatever the fees that we can come up with that are not taxes, okay? I think that in my experience working with the harbor for the last twenty years and being in that industry for the last twenty years and dealing with multiple city councils, that vessel owners are going to be much more inclined to work with the city if the city works with them and comes up with reasonable answers. If we want to, if we need to raise mortgage prices, then let's talk about it. Completely rewriting harbor ordinance is not the way to go about that. Implementing taxes is not the way to go about that. It's more of what do we have? How can we change it? What is easiest way to where both sides are happy? Instead of making it so much more complicated than it has to be.
Yes, ma'am. We definitely.
Well, it just, so right now, the only people that, um, contribute to the cost of running the city are, um, are vacation rentals, people who stay overnight. So that's not, I mean, that's fine, but they're not all, few of them are harbor users. So why would, for me, it's an equity thing. Why wouldn't the harbor pay their own way? Why wouldn't the, um, the, the store owners or restaurants that, you know, also, um, benefit greatly, um, from tourists? Why, why wouldn't they also contribute to the running of the city, which everybody loves? And to make it like it's, um, a hostile thing, it's not a hostile thing. There's, it's just, it's yahoos. You know, they have a, you know, transaction fee and nobody even blinks an eye. One percent, you know, to city tax on, you know, beverages or on restaurant food. And the same thing with the, um, harbor tax or, you know, uh, user, whatever you call it, mortgage, mortem passenger fee. It, it's almost invisible, you know? So when you make a, you know, if you're a booking agent and you're booking a hundred dollar, you know, fishing trip, you add a dollar user fee. I mean, it's, it, it, to me, I don't understand, maybe I just don't understand why that all of a sudden would be kind of a bookkeeping nightmare. It just, it seems to me, it's just, it, it just doesn't make sense that the only people who contribute, and they figured out a way to charge a transaction tax and ten percent or, you know, vacation rental. So to me, it's equity thing and we need to figure out a way of making individual, like the streets. I mean, there's hobbles all over. Why wouldn't the people who use our streets help pay them? It, it, to me, I just don't see why it's fair that only people who stay overnight contribute to the city.
I understand what you're saying and I, I can't speak for everybody in the harbor, but I can say that for the people that I do know and who represent the harbor, I don't think that the harbor will have a hard time paying additional fees in places to benefit harbor. Um, it's not, it's not really about that. It, it, it is a bookkeeping logistical nightmare, um, to deal with tax. Now, you wanna call something a, a fee to use something, that's something that's easier to deal with from a business standpoint. When you start taxing people, I mean, customers, yeah, a dollar on a hundred dollar trip is not much. Now, if you're talking about a thirty dollar whale watching trip and kids are fifteen dollars, well, kids, they already get a half price discount. But if they have to pay an, an extra two dollars for that kid, you know, that, that's not a money for people that are on a budget. I, I can tell you that people that come to depot bay, they are not high-income people. This isn't valid, okay? We don't charge five hundred dollars a night for hotels. We don't charge fifty dollars a meal for, for meals. This is a, to be perfectly honest, a low median income, like, medium to maybe high, depending on, you know, but the fact that I sell a five-hour trip for a hundred dollars, that's twenty bucks an hour. I mean, that's pretty close to minimum wage in some places now. We have to keep our fees in alignment with our customer base and who's visiting. So when you talk about adding, you know, a family of five would have to pay an extra ten dollars, ten dollars is a lot to these people.
It could be five dollars. I mean, we haven't even looked at the, the.
Right.
It's just like, oh, I hear is no, no, no from everybody in town.
Well, and I'm saying, nobody wants to pay anything. And it's like, wait.
You know.
You benefit greatly from the, from having businesses in this town.
Right.
And nobody wants to pay these, these taxes.
They, you know, based on these minutes that were provided, it was, you know, a lot of people are vehemently opposed on taxes that affect locals. The locals own the businesses.
Yes. Did you have a moment? Yes, please. Um, I'm not sure how this is to be accomplished, but I just wanna remind everybody. We just had our, you know, grand opening of the new docks. And I remember hearing the harbor master say that the new ones wouldn't last as long as the old ones did. We can't wait till sixty years from now to start worrying about that. Now that they're brand new, we need to figure out how much it's gonna take to replace those in sixty years. And save a little bit each year for that. I mean, I totally agree. I think appreciation has always been my goal. Did you have a moment?
I did. And I, I wanted to maybe try to make a stab at friends' question, not the hawkers everywhere. I did a symphony of recent, uh, streets budget. And I don't remember what it started out with. It, once you subtracted a grant, and once you subtracted the salaries and some other, uh, standing costs, we actually ended up with a street budget, about half of what it showed, I think it was about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, that we actually had to spend on streets in depot bay. And so that's gonna, now, that's not gonna go very far, I don't think. Uh, I just can't imagine it, the asphalt and all the holes and everything else. That, that's why at budget time, I think we've gotta really, you know, rein it in and, and, uh, make our budget according to our resources. And I don't wanna argue the budget right now, but all through it, there are, uh, examples of money that we think we need. We need to fund a thing over there or fund a thing over here or whatever. And I think we should be funding, you know, we should be pouring that money into those potholes. I, I still don't understand, Fran, when you're talking about this, why do we need this? You say nobody wants to pay. I know the citizens don't wanna pay. For heaven's sakes, if we were to come up with a utility fee, you'd really hear it from this. But I do believe in user fees and I believe everybody should pay their way. So if businesses aren't paying their way, let's make them pay their way. Let's charge for parking. We have plenty of other parking we should charge for downtown. Let's think of enterprise and ways that we can create revenue here with that. And it is an imposition to do a tax on people. I mean, if you, you've never done a business tax publicly, but, uh, believe me, it's, any kind of, uh, special extra tax imposed on a business is, is, uh, it, 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 it makes you tired, all of the extra work it's involved and the liability. And I sure don't wanna impose that on our businesses in the end for any reason.
I didn't wanna shed light, just on the bookkeeping part of the tax. So I'll, I'll give you an example, okay? Let's say I get someone booked for a fishing trip tomorrow. I'll just do a book. So that person booked online and as, if they were going to book, then they have to, included in their fee price is going to be the tax, their extra dollar, okay? But they paid with a credit card and tomorrow they can't go. So now I have to refund them. Well, I have to pay the processing of the refund through the merchant because they paid with a credit card. And there's probably thirty, depending on the year, thirty to up to fifty percent of trips that I book that don't go. And so if I'm collecting that money from them, then I have to give it back to them because they're not using the harbor anymore. Then I have to pay personally as a business that merchant fee, that, that percentage, okay? That credit card fees are the highest thing that I have to pay in my business as a booking agent, okay? There's no reconciliation from that because they had, you know, I had to charge them that tax, which I, I don't, personally, I don't, I don't think that it would be hard to sell to customers an extra dollar. I think that's reasonable. But the fact that at the end of the year, if I have refunded, you know, just random number, three to five hundred thousand dollars worth of credit card transactions because of trips that we're not able to go, that additional fee, that credit card fee that I have to pay because of that does cost my business a lot of money. And it's, you know, for, for me personally, there's a tax on, per person on charter. I'm not paying. I'm plucking it from the person and giving it to the city. So really, it doesn't affect me personally, other than paying the credit card fees and the loss of customers. There's always gonna be somebody that says, I don't wanna pay it. You know, I don't know how, what that percentage is like unless it's implemented. But there's always gonna be a percentage of people that are like, well, if the city's gonna do that, I'm not gonna go. I'm gonna go to Newport where they don't charge me or Air Valbe where they don't charge me that. Um, I don't know what that number looks like because it's never been done, but there is that possibility too. It would be a deterrent of people coming.
Okay, well, um.
Yes.
We're gifted. So, um, it really seems like the simplest solution would be just to raise the mortem rates according to the size of the boat. And because those boat owners haven't had an expense, they can just figure it into their admission without it being recognized as a separate fee. What does everybody think about that?
Yes. Mortgage is, is equitable between the.
It is certainly an option. It looks like according to the budget, the city does make money from reserve and freezing orange and it is certainly an option. I, I think that harbor users would be more obliged to do that than, um, deal with the tax would be my opinion.
I hope that we can raise eighty-five thousand from increasing mortgage fees.
But we can reduce expenditures in other areas to achieve that eighty-five thousand dollars. And while we're looking at ways to raise money in the harbor, I mean, we're coming into a budget where we have to raise eighty-five thousand dollars, right?
Harbor, harbor maintenance, materials and supplies should be weighed down for this next year because we have brand new docks. I mean, in the past, we've had to spend thousands of dollars on fleets and boards and time for personnel to go down there and fix these things. Now that these docks are brand new, I don't see a lot of that, that budget for materials.
Yeah, but we're not gonna make enough, as I was saying, to have a, have a fund that starts building for harbor maintenance where you put some.
This is, I mean, it's, it just, I, I don't know. I mean, when you think of how much money the char boats make.
We don't know how much they make.
Yeah, we do.
No, we don't. Have you seen our dash records?
Well, no, of course. And that's actually part of the reason they don't want to have any.
I, I think everybody's barely getting by from what I hear.
Come on.
Come on. If, if, you know, some of these people, these poor people, I mean, they're barely getting by, Fran. It's, it's an expensive, tough business with.
I, I, I'm sorry, Rick. You're just not even making sense here because.
I think that it is, um, not good to presume how much people. I think that everybody's salaries are not something that should be, um, thought about.
Well, that's part of the reason of flat fee rather than, um, you know, a head tax. So we don't know exactly how much, you know, how many people go out on a boat or how much, you know, how, how many boats ti- times they go out. That might be more preferable. So people can kind of keep their private information private, but, um, somehow there needs to be a way, realistic way of raising funds. And nobody wants to say it in public and it's, it's not a popular thing to say. And, you know.
I think that based on my position within the harbor, if you wanted to charge a harbor user fee, it would have to apply to everybody. And that's fine, but I think that the city is going to have a very difficult time trying to figure out how many people are actually using harbor. The charters are easy guys. We're here, we really is, okay? I'm not talking about the charters. We all know how much charters go out. We can watch it every day. It's not a secret.
Who else uses it? I mean, the, the small boats, they have their launch fees. So who else is using the harbor?
This, all of those small boats that go out. I, I work from three in the morning until nine o'clock at night. There are people over the end of the docks and throw crab pots off or fish off the docks. There are people that float around the harbor just because they like to, okay, for a TikTok video. I mean, you're talking about every single mortgage holder, not just charters. We're talking all small boats that just privately for pleasure go out fishing. So those guys that hold a mortgage slip, okay?
We could call it a passenger fee and just those that do commercial passenger trips. And we could figure out.
But that goes back to the head tax problem.
It could be a passenger fee. It doesn't have to be a head.
Passenger fee and head tax are essentially the same thing, but literally the definition is per capita based on certain type of people. And, I mean, it's, it's written right here in the constitution. Based on the most recent, um, time that the government got sued was this art tax in Portland. And they didn't win, but it was because they said, okay, only these people making a certain amount of money have to pay this tax in the city of Portland. And I'm sorry, but there's no way to police every single tourist that comes in the town and tells them anything, whether they fall, try to think of the head tax or per fee.
I mean, how many people during busy season on a daily basis do you estimate use of harbor that aren't already using the boat that has a fee?
That I don't know.
Did you mention people just walking out onto the docks and throwing out?
Yeah, there's people walking out there all the time. And then again, what's using the harbor? Is it walking the harbor? Is it parking the harbor? Is it doing a loop? Or is it the park that's next to the harbor?
All the above.
I mean, it's, then you're talking about how many people are, how many people are using the harbor?
We're talking about, oh, come on. I mean, we can parse this. I'm just, I'm a little bit frustrated because we have a real problem to solve.
Right.
We have a problem to solve.
You're talking about a harbor use fee. So what's use mean?
Oh, come on. It means things that cause wear and tear on our, on, on the docks and on the parking lot.
Right. So everybody that drives to the parking lot is causing wear and tear through the parking lot, on, on the parking lot.
Yeah, but it's not people who, you know, walk through there or pot off the dock. We have to be, I mean, this is a serious.
So they have to pop their car somewhere.
I mean, this is a very serious issue of trying to find revenue and it's, it's, this is a work session to find solutions.
Right. So I think the solution, as we have talked about, is let's move away from taxes and figure out a way to generate more money from harbor users. We can talk about increased mortgage or increased fuel taxes or increase anything like that, which I don't support any of that based on my position. But being on city council, I, I'm seeing both sides and I'm trying to give both sides an idea here, okay? I can't vote on any of this. I know that. But I'm trying to give you guys an idea of different ways you can generate money that won't completely irritate and turn the whole town into pitchforks showing up here causing a problem.
Mayor, I think I, I should interject on this. And you just said something, you can't vote on this.
Right.
I'm not sure that's true.
It is true.
Wait, 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 hold on. If, if, if it's not, if she's, she, if we're talking about a class of people, why wouldn't she be able to vote on that? It doesn't, it's not.
As a councillor, she has an economic, uh, interest in that harbor.
Economic gain for in the city council. So this harbor ordinance amendment, I can vote on that. I cannot vote on proposed crab pot storage fees. I, I can vote on, because I don't have anything to gain from changing harbor ordinance. But when we talk about crab pot storage fees, that I cannot vote on, that I vote against.
We'll get a, we'll leave on that, okay? Okay, I think, I mean, at this point, I'll, I'll take recommendations from the council on what you would like to do with, uh, this suggestion. We've spent a lot of time on this.
We spent a lot of time on this, so.
I need guidance, please.
She needs some guidance.
I think we just ought to consider raising the mortgage fees. Not to the same level as a bigger harbor with more amenities, but more than what they are now. It might not make us that whole map this way, but I think that would be the most logical and reasonable and seamless way to do this because, like I say, there's people that, but there's, and these are going to increase. They can pass on that increase to the people that use their services.
So that, that whole thing about not having showers, not having, that is, that we have thirty minutes, I mean, ten minutes to get out to the ocean versus a forty-five minute trip out of Newport or a Galloway is full. This is a, it's a very, very key location.
And that anybody that puts their boat in the harbor has to rinse their boat because of the invasive species laws. And we don't have a boat rinsing station. Anybody that sticks their boat in the harbor is supposed to rinse them and then get out because of the invasive species problem that is in Oregon. And we don't have that for anybody that drops their boat in harbor, neither does Newport.
Yeah, but these big boats aren't coming out of the water.
Right, we're talking about.
We're talking about smaller boats.
Right, so they're both super mild water, just right here.
So why not just raise the, let's see, the launch fee?
Right.
Uh, enough.
The launch and the.
You know, you, you're not going to want a, a person with a two-person canoe who's going out fishing for the day to pay as much as the bigger boats. But I think if they just raise the launch fees a little bit.
But they're hardly making money from the launch fees and we get federal, we get state. The, the logic was done by state people. We only have a certain amount that we could raise it. So that's, that's like a, that's not feasible. Maybe the crab pot fee, maybe we could raise it high enough to make some difference, but it's your fee. But, you know, everybody's saying, oh, this, this will be great. People will support that. We'll be, we'll be getting our heads spit off. You know, oh, you can't do that to us. Those mortgage fees will put us out of business. You know, those crab pot fees will put us out of business.
Well, unless we can levy all these fees on the harbor users, I think we're going to have to just pick one item.
I, I mean, I'll tell you right now that harbor users are going to be a lot less biting anybody's heads off if we talk about reasonable increases in mortgage fees and boat launch fees and things like that as opposed to restructuring how they completely do things without those tax. And that's based on my personal opinion and based on where I'm at in the harbor and based on the people that I have talked to. I think that if anybody wants to do anything here, I'm trying to be a bridge between both sides to try and not create more chaos. People are going to do that anyways because no one wants to come on by anything. No one's paying, no one likes to pay ten bucks for eggs right now, but hey, we have to do it. So people deal with it, okay? But I think that you're going to eliminate kick marks and torches if you move away from taxes and start talking about, hey, we have these new docks. Let's talk about a reasonable mortgage fee that it can pay.
Okay, um, how do we want to go forward? I'm going to bring it back. That we look into raising the mortgage fees.
Yes.
And lunch fees. I think we need to just get into the budget process and find out what the numbers are and.
Okay.
Get into it.
Okay.
Because that's something you want, a harbor commission, which is generally a.
Yes. That's exactly what I was going to say next, after the harbor commission and others weigh in.
Well, I'd love to see the harbor commission weigh in, weigh in on this in, in the sense that I think the harbor commission should be identifying areas where we can save money in the harbor. But in terms of raising the rates and everything else, this should be a process that, that's, it's very simple. You recently collected the rates, Kim, at, at Newport Harbor and sent that out as part of the harbor package.
We've done all of that stuff.
Yeah, so we should be able to establish rates and, and, and things that make sense that the skippers can, can see as reasonable. Everybody else is doing it. And I think it'll close that eighty-five thousand dollar gap that is here and then we can start looking in the future at, at additional money. Yeah, I, I just.
Okay, yes, because I'm new, I assumed that the harbor commission had already given their input for this because this was already in progress at the time it came on. So I was, I guess I was a little surprised to find out that, that we're making decisions about the harbor and we haven't talked to the.
We haven't made any decisions. This is, this is a workstation.
Right, okay.
Workshop, so, you know, we, we're just going through it on ourselves here.
So we're doing that now?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Pardon me, just a clarification. You're not asking them to review their charter, head tax, user fee, whatever. You just want them to review the mortgage.
Yeah, increase.
Well, there are other fees as well. We need to figure.
True.
So we should charge the harbor commission to figure out how to raise eighty-five, around eighty-five K with, you know, saving money and raising fees or other means. It's, it, raising mortgage fees or, you know, we have to look at crab pot storage, it's not going to make that, that deficit up.
Um, I just want to know what you're charging. We have two harbor commission members here, so they would probably like to know exactly what you're charging them with.
Yeah, try, I think we should charge them with making suggestions about how to make us budget gap. Okay.
And the council has supported that?
I, I, you know, I, I disagree. And I, I, you know, I support you, Fran, you have the theory, but I don't think you can give this job to the harbor commission and expect to get an honest answer.
Well, that's why the, the.
So we should give this job to our staff and let them figure it out.
Well, we have to do it our. So that's why we have to make the decisions, the hard decisions, and nobody wants to make them. We pretend that raising mortgage fees a little bit more is going to make a difference. It's not. We don't have that many boats in the harbor.
But we don't know. You say it won't make any difference, but if we're forty percent of, of what?
We're not forty percent because we just established harbor fees that were based on, like, the median of everybody around us. We just did that. So I think we're just trying.
Now we're done here. You have a meg twenty-five.
Yeah, so we are just trying to avoid making hard decisions. And I just don't know how those hard decisions are going to be made if we're not willing to say something other than punt it back to the harbor commission who've been working really hard on the harbor ordinance. And now we want to have them do our job for us again. Certainly, we want input from them, but it's, it's going to be very difficult.
So are, I, I miss this. We are at parity now on harbor rates and mortgage fees?
Um, no, she, she indicated, right, that the council last time voted to do a median increase, but we are not near parity, then parity is quite expensive.
Well, there you go. That's not the case then, Fran. If we were at parity, we'd be bringing in the, the money, but we're not at parity.
But where are we going to be in parity too? Because my documents are.
If you take an average of nine ports, divide it by nine, add up, divide it by nine, and there's your average.
That's what you want to be in parity.
I don't know.
I think that's second or smallest harbor. It'd be like.
Yeah, it has to be apples to apples.
You know, that's, that's, that's not apples to apples because, again, I agree with Fran. This is the best harbor in Oregon for a number of reasons. Just because we don't have showers. You don't need showers. We're not a commercial harbor. We're a destination fishermen, whale watching harbor. Nobody needs a shower. So we don't need these kind of amenities. I agree with Fran in the sense that we are five minutes from the nearest fishing where every port has, everybody else has to stream fuel for hours running to them.
So we need to record.
I'm sorry.
How much, is it, does the city want the harbor to be self-sustaining this year? Or, or just over a period of, say, while the harbor, the new docks are maintenance free for five years, maybe by the end of the five years, you could be caught up to the point where you're starting to cut aside your fees.
Right.
This sounds good.
Is it done? Okay, this one. Yeah?